Now I'm ready. Hold on one second. What are you talking about now? That was Jimmy that got you. Okay, this is, uh, we are on the air now.
Yep.
And, uh, we welcome you, those that are at home. This is not our regular meeting, this is a free Monday, uh, but this is budget season, so we're gonna be try, we're gonna try to be light tonight, but it is serious business. We'll be starting off with Mr. Serious Business himself, Don Fittin. Don? What say you?
I'm the, uh, Chief Turgerder, who are listening to this. I'll be making my first presentation on wastewater treatment facility. You wanna start that show for me?
He just kicked me off.
He kicked you off?
What?
Gee.
He censored these guys.
Well, you all have the handouts in front of you.
Sorry.
You broke the mayor.
I wasn't expecting that.
We have the PowerPoint in front of you, and the first picture, of course, is an overview of the wastewater treatment facility. Uh, that does include the, uh, tankage that was put in as part of 2010 improvements, and went on line in 2012. The wastewater treatment facility, uh, has a span of responsibilities as indicated on your slide. Uh, we operate and maintain the wastewater treatment plant. We operate and maintain fifteen lift stations or pumping stations that are scattered throughout the city. Uh, the largest being Market Street Lift Station, which is at the end of Market Street, down by the boat ramps, down by the flood wall that's being built. Uh, we also monitor and manage the operation of the equalization tanks. There are two equalization tanks currently in the city's collection system, both associated with the Hawkeye Separated Sanitary Sewer System. And, uh, there's radio communication between those tanks and the SCADA system at the wastewater treatment plant, and their purpose is to hold the extra water that gets into the collection system during wet weather events. And separated sanitary sewers do get extra water in them, even though they've been separated for the storm system because of the age of the collection system that's attached to it from the house to the city's main could be old, and it lets water in. The city did not do anything with going in and taking some pumps off of the house services, and also there are perimeter or basement drains that are tied in, in some cases, to the city's system. Uh, we also have a laboratory at the facility where we take samples throughout the plant. We also take samples at industries and we perform analysis there. We do perform and carry out the industrial pretreatment program, which is a requirement of our NPDES program, National Plume Discharge Elimination System Program permit. Uh, we have, uh, eight industries that are participating in that program, and we also de-water and land-apply the byproduct of wastewater treatment, the biosolids. That's used as a fertilizer and a soil amendment on farm ground. Uh, generally, we generate somewhere in about five hundred dry tons of solids a year. The current waste, next slide, the current, uh, design for the plant after the 2010 improvements is we can handle up to a peak flow of twenty point eight million gallons a day, uh, and it's designed to handle an average of ten point eight five million gallons a day. That would mean like over a thirty-day period, wet weather and everything, uh, it's supposed to be able to handle adequately and sufficiently treat the water to the standards we're required to treat to if the flow averaged ten point eight five million gallons a day through that thirty-eight period. Uh, in fiscal years sixteen, seventeen, actual numbers, we had the highest flow rate, the highest peak flow rate that came through the plant was twenty-one point four million gallons, which is a little bit higher than designed, but that's not that unusual to experience that type of flow for a short period of time. We took a maximum of fifteen point nine million gallons, uh, through the plant in a twenty-four-hour period during that fiscal year, and the least amount of water we took through the plant in a twenty-four-hour period was three point five million gallons. Uh, there's quite a disparity between the three point five and the fifteen point nine.
Yeah.
That tells you it's kind of the nature of our collection system. Part of our system still is combined, so we do get runoff, uh, from the streets, whether it be rain or snow melt, that could happen even during the wintertime. And, uh, three point five would be where the ground is very dry, or if everything's froze up, and there's no extraneous water getting into the system, and we can get at least as low as three point five million gallons coming from our businesses, our industries, our residences, coming into the collection system. The average during that fiscal year was five point three million gallons a day. Next slide. Again, with the 2010 improvements, uh, current design is for ninety-one hundred pounds of BOD. Uh, I know that probably doesn't mean much to you, biochemical oxygen demand, it's a kind of a measuring device for how much organics is in the water. Uh, our actual average during the fiscal year sixteen, seventeen was six, six thousand pounds per day. Uh, next slide, wastewater treatment revenue. Well, we have the sewer fees that appear on the water bill, as well as on the water bill, there's storm water fee, as well as there's also a trash fee. But sewer fee is, uh, the funds that we use to operate and maintain the wastewater treatment facility and our other areas that we're responsible for. Next slide. Uh, how do we spend that money? Well, the budget is split into two parts. One is administration, and one is the operation and maintenance of the facility. The first part, administration, has a prefix of fifty-four zero one. Uh, personnel is the four hundred series, and the four hundred series is basically covering two full-time persons, myself and my office coordinator. The contractual services, the five hundred series, uh, five twenty-nine miscellaneous technical services, that number there is a relatively large number, that is used to pay the waterworks for their billing services. They put the sewer fee on the water bill, they mail it out, they receive the payment, and they work with City Hall as far as getting the money to us. Uh, that two-thirds means that of the total service charge they charge the city, two-thirds of the charge goes against the wastewater treatment facility, the other third goes against the solid waste department. Uh, five eighty-one is another number that's kind of unusual, it's called local share contributions. We are making payments to West Burlington for some of the houses that are within the city limits that are, uh, sewered and actually going to West Burlington because from a topographic, uh, basis, it made sense for it to go there rather than trying to do something with lift station extending sewers and so on and so forth. And that number jumped because of the, some of the development that was taking place, I think, out on Erie Avenue. Uh, next slide. These are numbers that City Hall, uh, puts in my budget, transfers out, that's the nine hundred series, totaling one point five three million dollars. I don't know if you wanna mention anything about those or not.
So nine eleven is, uh, transfers to the debt service fund. They are sewer debts for projects that have occurred that were funded with general obligation bonds. All general obligation bond payments have to be made for out of the debt service fund. Uh, the administrative transfers of three hundred thousand. We transfer money out of the main sewer account over to the miscellaneous sewer rehab. Uh, we've been doing that for the last, well, last couple of years. This current year's budget, maybe it's in the, it's either five or seven hundred thousand to cover, uh, just miscellaneous things that would come up. The examples, the north and fourth street, the washout there is one that was covered with that fund. Uh, the sewer line down by the depot underneath the railroad tracks, uh, was funded from here, and I think we've got a Patterson Street, that, that might be road use tax that we're covering, covering Patterson Street. But projects that come up where you just didn't, you don't, they're not a budgeted thing that need, that, that we knew was gonna, that's a major project, but they, the things that can come up from one year to the next, and this'll be where, as Nick will talk about, the emergency repair, uh, by the division, is that on Division Street where Hy-Vee there?
North Eight.
North Eight. South Eight.
Angular.
Angular. Uh, that, that repair will come out of the same fund, so this is how we fund that. Uh, we had a couple of years where we did a borrowing, uh, to, to cover it. Uh, the last few years, we've just been covering for it out of operations.
Okay, next slide. Um, the second part of the budget for the wastewater is for the facility operation and maintenance, prefix is fifty-four zero two, and again, this is for the facility, the facility includes the plant itself, the fifteen lift stations, and the two equalization tanks. Uh, personnel, once again, is four hundred series. As indicated, we have fifteen full-time personnel and one part-time person. Um, we are a twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week facility. Some facilities are not, we are. So we keep somebody on-site twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, at least one person. And there's the breakdown, as you can see. Going on to the next slide, um, contractual services, five hundred series. Uh, five eleven is consulting, professional services. Uh, we have, uh, twenty-four thousand in there for private lab work. We do not do all the testing, uh, within our facility. We use the STI, the state hygienic lab, to do some other work for us. Uh, also, uh, the audit that is charged against our, uh, budget comes out of that line item. In, uh, fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, that dollar amount was fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, five nineteen, other professional services. Uh, we have a consulting agreement with H.R. Green as needed for not to exceed. Uh, would have to be amended if it were to be more than ten thousand dollars, but oftentimes we'll have engineering questions crop up, you know, in our facility that we feel we need some professional help with, and we'll give them a call and ask them to look into this and give us some advice on how we think, how they think we should proceed. We can build accordingly. Uh, there's also two hundred thousand dollars in that line item for the sewer master plan. Next slide. Continuing on, a large, uh, dollar amount is, uh, item five forty-three, that's the light and power. Again, that's for the plant, the fifteen lift stations, and for the equalization tanks. Uh, it can go up and down based on the weather pattern, dry, wet. Obviously, it's wet weather, the lift stations are gonna run a lot more. Um, the heat affects how well oxygen transfers in the tanks, so there's a lot of things that come into play about what our power bill's going to be from year to year. Next slide. Uh, the commodities, uh, one of the large commodity items, uh, is six twenty-two, it's chemicals for various purposes used in the plant. Uh, we use some chemicals out in the collection system to, to help us, uh, control the fats, oils, and greases that come from businesses, as well as residences, as well as for odor treatment. As the city continues to separate the sewer system, you can expect odor problems to continue to increase, not only at the plant, but also out in the collection system. The low flow of water through the sewers allows organics to settle out, and, uh, they don't really get flushed out well unless there is a rainy event, and some of these old sewer connections allow water in, increase the flow rate, suspends that material, moves it on down its way. Uh, we also have odor issues that occur at the plant. Now, the Lucas Street Basin, the Lucas Basin that's in the process of being engineered, they're looking at doing something differently there that may help odor control in that they are, um, as opposed to taking an existing combined sewer, which is a larger sewer, and turning it into the sewer to handle the sanitary flow only because it's already got the house connections tied to it. Well, that larger sewer with these house connections taking the storm water off of it is more apt to have organics to settle in. If you size the sanitary sewer properly, then the flow, uh, rate is better through there, and you have less issues with odors from that particular area. How that'll turn out is yet to be, uh, remains to be seen. Uh, we also have chemicals that we use for de-watering, for conditioning and de-watering of biosolids. Uh, we also use chemicals for disinfection of the treated wastewater, we use chlorine gas there out of one-ton cylinders, and we also have to purchase, uh, lab chemicals used in the, uh, testing procedures. Uh, the next slide, please, uh, seven fifteen, which is titled Buildings, we have forty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars in there. Uh, the three items are the reconditioning of draft tube mixer, digester cover repair, and a commercial dishwasher for the lab. Uh, the next item is seven thirty-one Streets, uh, we try to do a little concrete work down there on an annual basis, uh, just try to stay up with some of the work relating to concrete. That facility was built in eighty-two. The south end of the plant has some concrete that's been there since nineteen fifty-nine, and so we have a lot of concrete down there and a need for trying to stay on top of that. Next line, uh, slide, please, uh, seven thirty-nine Other, we have, uh, three roofs scheduled, uh, we have a couple of process wet well gates we wanna replace, and we have four hundred feet of nineteen fifty-nine vintage water main that has broken on us several times, and we're gonna try to get that replaced this next fiscal year. Uh, the next line is seven forty-three Vehicles, uh, we have a Ranger pickup that we wanna replace, we have two four-wheel-drive trucks. One of those four-wheel-drive trucks was supposed to replace, it's either last year or the year before last, but we switched it because we had a dump truck break down prematurely. We were expecting it to last longer, and it broke down, and so the cost for replacing that truck, we used the money for the four-wheel-drive truck towards that, and we did a few other things to try to make up for the shortage of funds, and that's why we have two four-wheel-drive trucks at one time this year. Uh, next, uh, slide. Uh, we, uh, with the, uh, improve, plant improvements in 2010, there was discussion about whether we needed to include something in the budget, or in the design, actually, at that time, for odor control. Uh, we decided to wait and see whether we were gonna have odors develop, and we saw two potential locations where the odors could be expected, one being the south end of the plant. Uh, we did some work at the south end of the plant in the last couple of years, expecting it to result in problems. It did not result, result in problems, so we were happy we didn't include in design doing something right away with that.
Sweet.
The north end of the plant is also another source of potential odors, and that's partly and primarily due to as the sewers separate and go through a dry weather period, the flow coming into the plant turns to be, tends to be more septic. Uh, it's, uh, rains actually help wash the sewer system out and freshen things up, but in the absence of rain, it gets kinda dry, the flows go down, and the water can become septic. Uh, this past year, we've experienced several phone calls from persons up on the bluff complaining of odors. I had this, uh, down the road in a couple of years, but in talking with the city manager, I felt like it'd be appropriate to move it up, uh, because we're already getting complaints, and it's only gonna get worse as we continue to separate the system. So that is for a chemical wet air scrubber to be located at the north end of the plant. We're hopeful that will take care of that issue. Next slide, please. So the total proposed budget for a fiscal year nineteen in, in administration, the five, fifty-four oh one prefix, we have the dollar amount indicated, the facility, O and M, fifty-four oh two, the air scrubber, the fifty-four fifty, we come up with a total of three point eight million. Factor in also the transfers out, it comes to a total expenditure of five point three million. Next slide. Uh, how do we pay for all of this? We're looking at proposing a three percent increase, uh, the sewer fee that appears on the water bill. Um, next slide. So wastewater treatment facility, it does have space available for treatment due to the 2010 improvements. The 2010 improvements cost the city six point two million dollars. Uh, the current design limits mentioned earlier, ten point eight five million gallons a day average wet weather, ninety-one hundred pounds of BOD. The current loading for both wet hydraulics and for organics is about seventy-five percent of what the facility is able to handle. One large industry could take that up very easily. Uh, we've had inquiries before by industries who in, who've wanted space that were like two and three times more than the entire city, which we just didn't have that space. Uh, we've had a few inquiries through the years, most recently, probably about five years ago, for an industry that would fit this niche, but that industry did not end up coming here, so, uh, we keep in contact with those who are seeking to bring businesses here. Uh, we do have limited space. If you ask me, can the plant be expanded further? Yes, it can. There is, there are things that can be done at the plant to increase the capacity. The issue, of course, is getting the material there. So if you go to the next slide, significant issues now and in the future. Well, first off, we're in the process of doing a study that's required by the state to see what we can do at the plant, uh, effectively, cost-effectively, to reduce the nutrients that is, that goes from our community to the surface waters. That study's supposed to be done by the end, the first of, uh, June of this calendar year. The state will look at it, and they'll come back to the city, and they'll say, okay, uh, we accept your report, we accept your recommendation, and, uh, let's come to some agreement about what it is and when it is that you're going to do this to reduce the nutrients going out with your plant effluent. That could go, affect the next bullet on that slide, because typically that, those types of process generate more solids that the digester will handle, and that means that our storage capacity will see, some of it will be taken out by these improvements that we are making due to the nutrient reduction requirements. Odors, as I mentioned, as we separate, that's gonna, that potentially has the, to become a greater problem. You all know about the flood mitigation. Uh, they do have plans to do some flood walls down around the wastewater plant, I think, like in the mid to late twenties. Uh, when they do that, they'll have to do the same thing there that they're doing on the riverfront here, as I understand it, they're talking about a concrete wall that'll trap any surface water on the plant side of that concrete wa, wall. There'll have to be some storm water pumping stations as they're proposing for the downtown, and in addition to that, if they seal off the river from the plant, then every drop of water that enters the plant will have to be pumped over the wall, and so we'll have to have a pumping station that's capable to that capacity of twenty point eight million gallons a day to get the water to the riverside of the wall. And then lastly, the sewer master plan findings, um, maybe Nick will be talking about sewer master plan at some point. The response to identified POTW, publicly owned treatment works limitations. POTW includes the sewers, it includes the lift stations, it includes the wastewater treatment plant. There may, in fact, be bottlenecks out there that would prevent you from further developing an outline area. There may be determining that the storm water system, as they separate the system, the storm water pipes may be, it may be recommended that the storm pipe should be increased. We won't know until the master plan is completed, and then we'll have to decide how much of a priority is this particular issue, how much of priority is that? Do we have the money? How do we wanna approach it?
How soon do you see that, how soon do you see that being an issue, Don?
Do you have any, do we have any idea when the master plan is expected to be done?
They're hoping in August.
This fall.
Yeah.
You have to realize the sewer system is handling what's there now, it's more of the issue about if there's gonna be any kind of growth.
See, we have the integrated planning effort that's going on, it's funded by EPA, along with the, the master plan that's being done by H.R. Green, and we're hoping to be able to have those kind of coordinate. So timing, I mean, we kinda have it listed in, in the August timeframe, but everything that's happened with integrated planning has been slower than what we've hoped for. It's, it's back open, so...
They're back open, Nick, by the way.
So maybe this fall, but I wouldn't be surprised if that didn't linger into the beginning of next year. This, this time next year, still having a discussion about how do we fit in stuff.
Next slide. And there we have, everybody's happy and safe in the rain.
Hanging in the rain.
That's what we want. Next slide, questions about wastewater?
She's good?
I had a quick question. You probably explained this, but what does de-watering biosolids mean?
Well, the, uh, end product of wastewater treatment is, uh, well, people think it's poop, but it's not. We got a digester at the end of the plant, the flow train, and what it's doing is it's managing and handling and digesting the excess biological bugs, the process, the activated sludge organisms that treat the water for us. That population is a living, growing population, always getting bigger, and yet we only have so much food coming into the plant. So to try to maintain a balance between the population that's treating the water and the food available to it, we have to remove or waste, uh, from the population, those excess organisms. They go into the digester, they don't get any other food, they use up the fat deposits, get their candy bars out of their pockets, use those, use everything up, and they become a more stable substrate, and then what we do is we add a polymer, a chemical that conditions the solids and the water mixture, causes them to coagulate, and we put them on a machine that's made up of two porous belts that squeeze the material between, and it squeezes water out to reduce the volume that we are handling. The end product is the material that goes into a truck to the storage facility and ultimately land-apply to the farmer's field as fertilizer and, uh, soil conditioner. If I remember right, somebody, and I'm not gonna say who, stuck their hand in a bucket...
The stuff you picked up.
I know, I was so intrigued, I had to touch it, yes.
Okay, so that's what that is.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
That's gave you the right meaning tonight, huh, Bauer?
No, I touched some right before here.
And she's still alive.
That's what I'm talking about. Any other questions?
This, the sewer fund, we do have, as Don was mentioning, the three percent proposed rate increase, that's for both the sanitary sewer fee and the storm water. Uh, we, both of those fees go into the same fund. Um, and then the expenditure categories, Don covers the fifty-four, the fifty-four oh one, the admin, and then the fifty-four oh two, the plant itself. Uh, we will then, Nick will, on Thursday, talk about a third area that's covered. Uh, the expense code is in the fifty-four eleven category, they're all fifty-four hundred series for the plant, or for the sewer system, but his is for the, the pipes and lift stations throughout the community, not just, not just the plant, but the, the rest of the system and how, what they have to do to maintain it.
Do you have what that three percent represents, an approximate figure, as far as rate, increase in revenue?
Overall?
Yeah.
Uh, overall system revenue is seven point two million, so...
Do you have that air scrubber in your budget?
That's about four hundred thousand more than what the current year's is, and yes, he's, that's, the air scrubbers and the CIP. Um, we have a separate capital improvement, and it was listed in, in your CIP, and it showed how it was being funded. It's, we have cash on hand that's in a separate capital project fund, uh, that we'll use to cover that. Uh, we're sitting with seven hundred and fifty thousand in, or no, I'm, six hundred and seventy thousand sitting in that fund. We may use a portion of that this year. Uh, the balance will still be large enough to cover that. And something that we also cover out of the sewer revenue fund, uh, we have sewer revenue bonds. Not only do we pay the general obligation bonds that Don mentioned in his budget, but there's this, another code section, the fifty-four thirty-three, which is all our existing sewer revenue debt. Uh, the new one that's on this year, we're starting to have the principal and interest payments from the most recent SRF construction loan, which was a final phase of the mantle, or, I'm sorry, the final phase of Cascade that we, that we did, so...
On the, on the three percent, um, can you explain, uh, or, that just didn't come out of nowhere this year, on the three percent increase?
Well, historically, if you were to look back to the mid-two thousands to early two, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, we were doing nine percent annual rate increases to try to get the CSO work accomplished. Uh, something that we talked about over the, um, with the DNR, uh, probably about two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, was, uh, asking for an extension of time on our existing CSO work. Uh, they gave us a couple of years' extension, um, and said that they would be willing to talk with us as we move forward with, with... with us as we move forward with, with, and more extension when we had a better idea what our actual costs were gonna be with the CSO work, which we have gotten some idea on, and we, we just can't afford it anywhere near on the schedule. But part of that discussion with them was, can we, can we get some sort of level of compromise here in terms of, you know, we want to be able to hit the work that needs done, but we also want to be somewhat cognizant of the impact this has on our ratepayers. We'd like to be able to move forward with a schedule where we're raising rates at about 3% a year, and trying to meet those system needs, and try to adjust the schedule to fit within it. Now, they've initially talked about being willing to work with us on that, given the extent of the costs that are gonna go on with completing the Masl, and the other system needs that we have, I'm not sure if they will honor that long-term, but that's at least where the framework that we're operating under is having a systematic 3% rate increase, knowing it's not enough to do what needs done, but hoping to work with the NR that they're satisfied that we are aggressively trying to, to work at it on a systematic basis.
Thank you. Don, you brought up, excuse me, Don, you brought up the issue of industry that's looked to come to Burlington but has been unsatisfied with the amount or capacity at this point. What, in your mind, is our flexibility in the future, in the event something were to come to us and have interest in moving to Burlington? How much more capacity do you think we could take on before you're saying, listen, we need to start looking at, at large infrastructure improvements here? And, and if something were to show up and say, listen, we want to do this, but it's gonna require a significant amount of, of, uh, capacity increase, what's our flexibility look like there?
Well, number one, I'll say this, as I understand it and talking with people who are supposed to be in the know, typically an industry wants to be up running full bore within six months of making the move. That requires quite a vast response time. Typically wastewater plant improvements don't take place in that short a period of time. Having said that, there are some technologies out there that I think are probably, that could be used to increase our capacity at the plant, maybe within six months, it just depends on how fast City Hall can move and so on and so forth, but how much space, I mean, I would just be making a wild guess, I, I would think we could double our, our space that we currently have, which as I said, we're at 75%. So, but the thing is, is we've got this nutrient reduction study that has yet to be completed, and the technologies that are used there are likely to actually reduce how much space we have, because, in order to accomplish what we're gonna be required to accomplish. So, until we do that and see what the recommended path to follow there is, it would be difficult to entertain expanding the facility or knowing what we could do with it.
Given what this, if we're at 75% of our loading now, you can use that other 25% to meet an immediate need, but that's from a pure volume perspective. The problem that you have with talking about industry is each industrial usage is different, and different, different loadings, even if it's the same volume, has a different impact on how the plant mechanics work, and it brings, each of those discussions brings up a, some level of negotiation maybe, if it's beyond what our capacity is of pretreatment at the plant itself.
Right.
And so you're gonna see that a lot of the different negotiations are gonna take a look at how do, how do we work at a compromise that, that does stuff at the plant itself versus down at our plant. And it's, it's, it's not an easy one to just say that you can look at the number and say that we have maybe 5 million gallons a day that we can take for additional load, it's not, that's not the only thing that goes into it.
Answer my question perfectly, you said six months is typically where they want to be, and, and it sounds like you're optimistic that there may be opportunities out there that could help load some of that in six-month period, but depending on the size.
Yeah. Yeah.
We good?
Great.
Thank you, Don.
Thanks, Don.
Sounds good.
Uh...
Now we're going to the next slide. Let's move forward.
Okay, solid waste, there we have a picture of a garbage can, and we have a picture of recycling bin, and that's what the solid waste fund or department is responsible for, and the funds that are collected to cover that. Next slide. Solid waste, the trash, the basic service fee, and I'm, talk a little bit more about that later, but basically, there's a fee that people pay on their water bill for trash services, and its line item says trash, and that fee, or a portion of that fee, is intended to cover the collection of 133-gallon container, household trash with a limit of 50 pounds. It also is intended to cover the seven-week program we do in the fall, picking up bag leaves, the three-week program we do in the spring, picking up bag leaves, the citywide cleanup program, and also, we do have people who will use a pickup truck, a trailer, they'll prune a tree, cut down a tree at their house, prune their bushes, they'll throw it in their truck, they'll throw it on their trailer, they'll take with them their water bill that shows that they're a trash-paying customer, they'll drive out to the landfill, they'll drive across the scale, and rather than getting out their wallet to pay for the cost of the wood waste they're taking in there, the landfill will bill the city and, and be charged against us. So, that is what I refer to as the basic service of the ba- basic trash service. Now, if you have more than the 133-gallon container, which there are some people that do that on a regular basis, then we are talking about having to purchase the tag, that nasty thing that so many people have strong dislike for. One tag must be used on each additional 33-gallon container, doesn't matter if it's a third full, half-full, three-quarters full, full, if they want it picked up, they have to have a trash tag on that additional container. Tag from the retailer for $1. Through the years, the price has gone up, the last time the council decided to raise the price of tag was in July of 2014, it was at $2. We actually sell to the retailer a tag for $1.95. Most retailers charge $2. We do not tell them what they have to charge, but that's just what it's been, is they typically add a nickel to the cost that they paid to the city. Next slide. Other uses for the trash tag besides the extra container or containers that they have set out for collection, there's a table there that we put out in our annual newsletter, it's on our website, but people can get rid of bulky items and various other types of items, as long as they call us for the things like car batteries and computer monitors, that has to be scheduled. The ones that are in the upper half are, they can, if they know, if they go to the website and they see it, they can put those tags on that item, put it out, same day their garbage is collected, that item will be picked up. So, there are people who do use the trash tags for what I'll refer to as bulky items. Next slide.
Don, I've got a problem.
Yes.
That I was supposed to ask, it's not my problem, personal, but it's a lady that she does a lot of frying, and she doesn't know how she's supposed to get rid of her, I, I don't even go in there how she used to get rid of her old grease, but she needs to do it the right way. So, can you explain how they're supposed to get rid of their old cooking oil?
Well, cooking oil, there's cooking oil, and then there's like bacon grease. You know, vegetable oils and stuff are typically not something that causes a problem with the sewer system. Grease, on the other hand, can. I have had, I don't really want to talk about this.
I should open this one.
You know, there, there, there are turkey fryers out there, and I don't know how many gallons are in a turkey fryer or whatever, but people will use the vegetable oil in a turkey fryer, and then they'll end up with a container, and I don't know how many times they use it, if they straighten it or whatever, but they call me and say, hey, I'd like to get rid of this, and I don't feel comfortable pouring it down the drain, so I'll ask them to just bring it down to the plant, and we'll take care of it at that point, we'll dump it there at the plant. That way you bypass any problems that might be caused for the sewer system. Never had anybody call me and say, hey, I've got a five-gallon pail of bacon grease. I think that if they're like me, I let the bacon grease solidify, and then I wipe it out with a paper towel, and I put it in the trash, and that material can go to the landfill. It's the liquid fraction that can't go to the landfill.
Thank you.
But you don't want to pour bacon grease and that type of material down your drain, because you're gonna have to call a plumber pretty soon. Okay, uh, let's see, so, turn to the next slide, please. So, here's an example, in 2016, 17, what we picked up in trash, we picked up 5,689 tons of trash, that excludes the leaves, that excludes citywide cleanup, that averaged like 109 tons per week. And then we picked up, that particular fiscal year, we picked up an additional 240 tons during the citywide cleanup program, so in 2016, 17, as far as trash and garbage, we picked up 5,929 total tons. Then down below, it shows we picked up 373 tons of bag leaves during the three weeks in the spring and the seven weeks in the fall. So, remember that number, we're right at about 6,000 tons of garbage and trash. Next slide, please. During the fiscal year 1718, we had six full-time drivers and one part-time driver that's limited to 29 hours per week. We do flesh out our crew using temporary labor, which is paid out of prefix 5301, that's the solid waste, 519, during specialty programs such as the leaf program, I consider that a specialty program, it's not something we do all the time, and as well as the citywide cleanup, it's not something we do all the time. So we do flesh out our crew in order to get both the garbage that needs to be picked up, as well as get that specialty program material picked up as well. Next slide. We have seven trucks, the oldest is 20 years old, you can see the newest is two and a half years old, the average age 10 and a half, replacement rate is every 14 years. Next slide. Okay, so now I've talked about trash and garbage, that's paid for under our fee that you, people pay for trash on their water bill. That fee also that's paid there pays for the recycling program services. Now, at the very bottom of that slide, it says, we contract with the Des Moines County Area Recyclers, that facility that's on West Burlington Avenue, east of the old Burlington Northern Railroad shops. They do the curbside collection only, and that's every two weeks in Burlington, they have the 24/7 drop-off there, they also process the recyclables that they collect, prepare them, bundle them, bail them, look for buyers, try to get the best deal they can for the product, and sell it. They use educate, they do education, they meet with industry, they eat with businesses, they meet with schools, meet with municipalities, try to educate them about the recycling programs. They also operate the household hazardous chemical program out at the landfill, where people have a partial container of some liquid chemical paint or whatever that they want to get rid of, they can contact them and take that material out there. And then there are people who are looking for, they don't care what color paint, they just need a quart of paint, and they'll go out there, and there they are, and they'll take it, and so then they just use it and reuse the material. So that's the, that, there's a fee associated, I mean, there's a fee, obviously it costs them money to do that, and they charge us. Solid waste, next slide, 16, fiscal year 1617, recycling program collections. They picked up, they processed out of their 24/7 drop-off, right at 1,400 tons of recyclables in that fiscal year 1617 at that facility. Note the asterisks, note the bottom footnote, this include, the people, all the people that use this, that people from the county would use that drop-off, people, I use that from Burlington, people from Burlington go to the drop-off, they may augment their curbside program, they may choose not to participate in the curbside and say, I'm running an errand, I'm gonna go out and drop off my recyclables. And West Burlington residents also use that. 1,400 tons, 567 tons were picked up by their crews at curbside in Burlington during that fiscal year. We pick up recyclables at the city departments and take it to the recycling center, and that fiscal year, we picked up 27 tons from the various city departments recycling. So, the total tons of recyclables represented on that slide is 1,993, almost 2,000 total tons recyclables. Remember the previous slide where I commented about trash and garbage? We handle about 6,000. So, we handled 6,000 tons, they handled about 2,000 tons, okay? But 6,000 is from the city of Burlington, the 2,000 is a great deal that is from their drop-off, we don't know who's using that drop-off. I'm sure there's businesses that use that drop-off as well. Okay, next slide, solid waste revenue, where's our revenue come from? Well, we have the trash fee on the water bill, we told the solid waste commission, well, we have 9,650 households that we provide garbage services to. Those are the number of households that you're supposed to provide curbside recyclable collection from as well. So, and in addition to that, so, we have the trash fee that's on the water bill, 9,650 customers are paying that trash bill to us, as well as we have revenue from the $1.95 that we charge the retailer that comes in and says, I need 500 tags for my store, so they calculate that times $1.95 each, they pay the money, they walk out of the city hall with those tags, and then they sell them from their store for, most often it's $2, but there are some places that may charge more, or may charge less. Then we have a dumpster permit that we collect the fee from commercial haulers who have those large roll-off containers that are sitting out in the city street at the curb, they're supposed to have a permit attached to it, they pay a fee to the city based on the length of time it's gonna be there. I'll mention one other thing while I'm sitting here looking at the trash tags, I believe in the budget, I, we show a projected revenue to the city of sales of the trash tags to the retailers of $222,000. $222,000, that equates to about 112,800 trash tags a year, which is about 2,170 tags a week, if it was spread equally throughout the week or through the year, and that's about 78% of the 9650 households. Now, the rate, there's probably more than 78% of the households that don't buy the tags, leaving the 20, you know, leaving the 22%, it's probably less than 22% that are buying tags, because there are households out there that use more than one trash tag a week, but this is based on if they were using one a week. But that gives you an idea, about 80% of the households routinely are able to get away with only 133-gallon can, 50-pound limit, and the others are buying trash tags and using that.
For nose.
Next slide. Okay, so what is the trash fee per month that people pay on the water bill? Well, one of the things that the city has done ever since they've had that line item on the water bill is they keep it as one line item. So if we look at this, I'll look at July of 2017, if you go down to the bottom of that far-right column, it says $14. And the residential water bills are for three months, typically quarterly, so on the water bill, there is a dollar amount of three times $14, or $42 for trash, that represents three months. But if you look at it, that $14 is comprised of the basic fee, what I call the basic fee, the $10.35. If you go back to the earlier presentation, I talked about 33-gallon bag or can once a week, it also pays for the 10-weeks of leaf program, it also pays for the citywide cleanup program, it also pays for the wood waste that people self-haul. For $10.35 a month, that is covering all that, all those services. $3.65 of the $14 is for the recycling. Solid waste commission charges this $3.65 times that 9,650 households per month. Solid waste commission charges this three dollars and sixty-five cents times that nine thousand six hundred and fifty households per month to provide all the services that they do. The curbside, the twenty-four-seven, the processing, the education, the household hazardous chemical facility out at the landfill. I mean, that we get, there's, there, they do a lot, okay? But three sixty-five of that is recycling of that fourteen dollars. And some people think that if we were to break that out on the water bill and people saw that they were actually paying three dollars and sixty-five cents a month for recycling, they may not be recycling now, but by golly, if I'm paying for it, I'm gonna use it. They're gonna call and say, "Hey, can I take that, have that taken off?" And we're gonna say, "No, you can't." But maybe they would recycle because they know they're paying for it. And then again, they may just scream real loud because they think it's highway robbery. Okay, so next, next slide.
Yes, please.
The next proposed increase to the trash fee is we're looking at adding fifteen cents to the basic service for trash. And we're looking at adding ten cents for the recycling services. So that adds twenty-five cents per month to that fourteen dollars. Next slide. So you're talking about, and you're going from ten thirty-five to ten fifty a month for the basic service. You're going from three sixty-five to three seventy-five for the recycling portion. That adds up to fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents a month, times three months, be forty-two dollars and seventy-five cents on the trash line of the water bill.
What is the private market paying for trash-ish?
I don't know.
So I can just, I have a, a private, uh, organization pick up trash at our office just because we wanted to take advantage of the larger can that I didn't have to worry about being blown across. And I believe it's about fifteen dollars a month just for the trash.
Right. So, and I'd like to point out that ten weeks of leaf collection program.
Those are nice services.
Citywide cleanup and wood waste. But many people feel that we're paying too much for trash services. Okay, next line, or next, next slide. Fiscal year eighteen nineteen, solid waste expenditures. Okay, so how are we spending this money? Uh, prefix for solid waste is fifty-three zero one, personnel is, uh, four hundred series. And the budget, numbers you have in front of you under personnel's, uh, services is six full-time plus one, it's actually seven full-time drivers. I have been asking for a long time for another full-time person in the department. And plus, there's one part-timer as indicated on the slide. And so the numbers that you have in front of you, you could look at last year versus this year or the proposed coming year. And it's been increased to account for one full-time person. Uh, that's replacing the person that was taken away from us by attrition about four years ago. And we've had a lot of issues, our cost for temporary labor has been going up.
You guys knew them.
We've had, uh, well, we've, we've had issues. And, uh, this would mean a great, great deal to our department for that position. It will give us a lot of flexibility and, uh, training because they have to learn the routes. It, it, it's just something that we need badly. Now, correspondingly, they did take some of the money away from another portion of the budget that pertains to my temporary labor. But they did, uh, give me that full-time position. So contractual services, five hundred series, five nineteen, other professional services. That's theirs, that's where the temporary labor is paid out from. And, uh, you can see the history there. Um, we use, uh, temp associates for our, uh, temporary labor. It is getting harder and harder and has been proven harder and harder for the last few years of getting people willing to come out and work in our program.
I was gonna ask you how that was working with.
We have, we have one person that's been very, very dependable.
One?
But when, one, but when you need two and three people for the specialty programs, they come out, they work for two hours, they walk away, work for one day, they don't come in the next day, it makes it very difficult.
When you say specialty programs, is that?
I'm talking about the leaf programs.
Spring cleanup.
Citywide cleanup.
But on a regular basis, the, the, the weekly collection, you've got full-time people operating those routes for the most part or?
Plus a part-timer. Now, these guys accrue vacation time.
Absolutely.
And they get hurt, their backs hurt, or they get sick. And if someone's on vacation and then another guy is sick or he's throwing up, all of a sudden we're down two guys. We've had days where we've had four drivers, four full-time people in the department, everybody else is gone. And we've had one temporary person working with them.
How many, how many guys are not, are picking up on our, on our daily basis regularly?
Well, we have seven people scheduled. We've had one guy that's been off for about six months due to an on-the-job injury. And I should be hearing back later this week whether he's gonna be back or not. So we've been down one person all that time anyway. It, there's a distinction between, there's a difference between a temporary worker who is there to help carry versus having someone who knows the truck, has a CDL, can drive the truck and move in, move the truck forward, take this guy's place. There, there's a rhythm that they get into and when you don't have that rhythm, things go a lot slower.
My, my other question was just moving forward is especially with, uh, when it comes to this is shifting some people. You know, from, uh, we don't have a pro, we don't have a program like that to shift some people maybe from public works when we have a situation because we've run into some problems.
I, I have talked with them. And, and, and they, to their credit, I'm very thankful. They've said, "If you really need somebody, give us a call." I've had a couple of conversations this year. And, and, uh, in one case, one guy who was sick came back and a guy who was hurt came back the same day. If they hadn't, we would've been using street department personnel to work with us. And in those cases, you know, they don't know the routes, but they have a CDL, they can move the truck. And, uh, we would get more benefit from them. But when they come from the street department, they're not doing the work that they're supposed to be doing. So. All right, so, uh, I'd like to go on to the next slide if I could, please. Um, fiscal year eighteen nineteen, three oh one expenditures, five twenty-four sanitation landfill services. That's the line item that we pay for the tipping fees of the garbage we haul out there, the citywide cleanup we haul out there, people taking wood waste out there, that all comes out of that line item as well as, uh, when we take TVs, appliances, uh, tires, uh, that type of material out there, that comes out of that line item. And we pay for that just as the resident does. So that's why we require so many tags when we go to their house to pick it up. If they ask us to carry this item, take this item away, we charge like five dollars for the pickup service and take it out to the landfill. But then the rest of it gets, the revenue that we get from the sale of tags is to pay for them at the solid waste, uh, the landfill to take it off our hands. Uh, and then also the recycling service fee, that three dollars and sixty-five cents a month times nine thousand six hundred and fifty customers times twelve months, that comes out of that line item.
Don, I was gonna ask, cause we kinda slipped over that, that slide on the tags. Is there, those, that seems to me to be, even though people are gonna gripe about it, a low amount of tags for the convenience of just putting it out at the curb versus taking it out to the, the recycling center, like TVs and, and, and is that something you guys review from, you review from time to time?
Yeah, we do. We, you know, we, we, we do. Uh, there's a fear and maybe it's not well-placed fear, but there's a fear that if you make it too unreasonable, it's gonna end up in the ditch someplace.
Yeah, I, I, I can get that, especially.
And we don't, we don't take one TV out there.
Sure.
We'll wait till we get a truckload of materials and then we'll take it out there.
Yeah, I'm still just thinking about the, the weight and heft because it's not normally in a container.
Right.
Uh, that's easy to handle, uh, so that's why I was, I was wondering about that. I happen to be familiar with tires being dumped in a ditch.
You know about that.
Um, so where are we at here? Okay, so let's go to the next slide. Uh, miscellaneous technical services, you remember I mentioned about the billing services that the waterworks does for handling the bills and the money? Um, two-thirds of it comes out of wastewater, the other third of the total cost. So that number, that dollar amount in that line item represents one-third of the total fee that the Burlington Water Works charges us for their services. Commodities are six hundred series and capital outlay. I have a new truck in the budget for this upcoming fiscal year. Normally I buy a truck every other year. I did not buy one the last cycle, which gives me some flexibility in city halls, some flexibility. Fiscal year eighteen nineteen, next slide. Transfer out, there's a nine hundred series again. Um, I don't know if you wanna comment about that at all.
The administrative transfer, the hundred and eighty-eight thousand goes to the general fund. I don't know that I mentioned that with the sewer fund. The sick, there's like seven hundred thousand, that's the same administrative transfer. Uh, those, both go to the general fund to cover overhead. They're designed to cover our HR department, accounting services, et cetera, for services rendered and.
I'm a hard person to manage. Takes a lot of time.
He's more than a hard person to manage.
Excellent time.
Is that all?
He's more than a hard person to manage.
Next slide. Uh, so summation of, uh, the solid waste, uh, budget. Uh, again, prefix fifty-three zero one, uh, four hundred series, five hundred series, six hundred series, seven hundred series. Total is a one point eight million dollars. Then along with the transfer out, it puts us real close to two million dollars. Next slide. So program-related issues. Uh, we have a manual collection program, our guys are picking everything up manually. Wear and tear on the employees, both physical and stress. And you can say, "Well, it's stressful being a garbage man." Come on, what do they gotta do? They gotta go out, they pick up the garbage, throw it in the truck, big deal. Well, you know, they're almost like pseudo policemen because there's all these rules. Volume, weight, this has to have a tag on it, that item's not supposed to be in the garbage can, I can't take that. Uh, you know, they, they deal with that and people are watching them. We get calls from people who are watching out their back windows and seeing what's going on and say, "Hey, that, he took that person's bag over there and he didn't take mine." I know that bag didn't have a tag on it. And then, of course, they deal with all the weather conditions. We've had some weather where, what was it, seventeen degrees below zero and wind chill, you know, blowing maybe thirty below and they're out there working in that weather. They're in and out of the truck, they're carrying that stuff. When there's a hundred and ten or a hundred and fifteen heat index, they're out there working in that weather. You can't get away from the weather. But all the program rules put a lot of stress on these and the number of people that are working there. You know, is so-and-so gonna show up today? Okay, so the other thing associated with our program is, uh, some people might say that the tag program has created nuisances. Before we got into the, the tag program, basically they picked up what was set out. And so if you had three bags out or three cans, they took it. Uh, the tag program requires certain rules. It's a volume-based, it's weight-based. And if you don't have that extra tag, you don't take it. And the neighbor calls and says, "Why didn't you take that guy's garbage? It's been sitting there for two weeks." You know, "We need that garbage out of here." It's the middle of summer, there's flies, there's insects, there's vermin, it's odors, it's blowing down the alleyway, all that kinda stuff. So you have the nuisances of the uncollected garbage impacts, not only on the property that's not following the rules, but you also have the neighboring properties. And it's not necessarily the person right next door. It could be across the alley, two or three houses down, and you get a lot of people upset. You got odors, you got vermin and sanitary conditions, you got unsightly litter. The thing that's really easy to lose sight of is that the litter you see in our community is not necessarily always from the garbage can.
That's true.
The recycling program we've got with the small containers and large containers. But have you ever seen going down the street on a, uh, recycling day when the wind's blowing twenty-five, thirty miles an hour and the recyclables are sitting out there? So you need to remember that. It's easy to forget, it's not all garbage. But when you live next to a house that has garbage not being picked up, sitting in the backyard, sitting up on the porch, it can become very, very aggravating. Okay, next slide. Reality disposal isn't either simple or cheap. Examples, why do people get frustrated with solid waste programs?
It's realty, actually. You forgot the I, but that. It happens to the best, Don, don't worry.
Could you look grammar comp now?
Items once accepted and buried but now are banned from local landfill, requiring special handling and in some cases a handling fee. They used to take tires that were set out, used to take batteries, used to take appliances, throw them in the garbage truck. Used to take wood waste, the yard waste, the limbs down from a storm. Used to take TVs, devices with screens. And I'm not so sure about the liquids, I'm not real positive about that, but, uh, they're very careful. They try to be careful, they don't wanna put a can of paint in the back of the truck and have it tripping all over in front of somebody's driveway or down the street. So people say, "Well, gee, you're charging more and you're taking less." You know, but all this kinda stuff, uh, it can be handled through the city's programs or through the recycling program. It's just that most of that stuff costs money to get rid of now, where it used to be all part of the stream. So, next slide. There's no such thing as a way, when we throw anything away, it must go somewhere.
That's a good one.
And that's, it does. So, next slide, questions?
Quest away, group.
Um, for how the bill is broke down. It's not currently broke down in such a way where people can see, um, trash, basic service, and then recycling.
That's true.
That's true. What can we do? Can we fix that? I would like that.
I don't know if there's a racing board or?
Stephanie, how many count, the, how many codes can they put on there? Do you know if they have flexibility with that? We'd have to check with water, whatever their billing system is and how many, uh, account codes they can take.
I think that would be important. And then maybe even instead of fifteen cents for trash and ten for recycling, do twenty-five for trash, but list recycling as an option.
I, I agree with that because when you hear your comment that your trash pickup was more economical, that doesn't include the leaf collection, it doesn't include the curbside, it doesn't include the recyclables. So if you wanna compare apples and apples, maybe we need to get our receipt listing everything out. So they, they do see the value in it and I, I agree, it may generate more complaints, but it may also educate the consumer that I am getting more for my dollar than I ever realized before.
To me, I, anytime, oh, I was just gonna say, anytime something goes up though, people are gonna complain.
They're gonna, they'll think it's a new addition is what they'll think.
But that fee that I pointed out that is for recycling, that basically is a pass-through fee. I mean, that is what the commission is charging. Currently, it's three sixty-five, it's gonna go to three seventy.
Des Moines County Solid Waste Commission charges a per-household fee to us. They leave it to us whether we're, how we're gonna take care of it, but that is assessed to us based on the number of residences that we have in the community. Uh, we, we, uh, incorp, we don't have it listed as a pass-through, it's one of our basic costs and we just have it, um, uh, we just incorporate within our overall bill. We can have it listed as a pass-through, but it's gonna be then whatever they are assessing us. And it's not an opt, it, it's not something we can, that an individual household can opt out of, it's, it's a mandatory fee on us.
Yep.
I think, I still, I agree with you, Manny, that it probably best if it was just broken down, if it can be broken down. Um, and it's, people are gonna complain, I mean, if, if it's, if it's one online item and it goes up a dollar, there, there are gonna be those people who are gonna complain about it regardless whether it's a pass-through with Des Moines County.
Right.
Recycling or, or if it's a landfill rate increase or whatever. So I'd be in favor of seeing that broken down in the bill if it can be done.
Uh, Don, given, given the capital costs, the vehicles and the, the human resource problem that you're facing from time to time, I know they've looked at privatizing that before. Has there been any discussion about investigating that, putting it out to bid even to see if it's competitive?
We had, we had a discussion back in February, uh, February, fiscal year twenty thirteen, fourteen in that timeframe. Uh, at the time, we did lim, uh, eliminate one funded position, which is, we're asking to bring back at this point. There was some level of discussion on the council at that point about possibly going out. Uh, Don went through some of these additional services that you'd have to make sure that you're accounting for, uh, either asking someone outside entities to bid on doing the same level of service or knowingly, uh, make sure that you know that when you bid out service, that you may have some of these things that go away. The council at that time ultimately decided they did not want to bid that service out. Now, that, that being said, if you were wanting to look at it, you certainly could.
Well, I, I just think that might be something to investigate from time to time, and I, and not the goal of, of it, listening to your two areas of responsibility, you've got loads of work to do. So, and not, I'm not looking at, uh, necessarily saving cost and personnel, but I am looking at, I think it would be worthwhile, look at it because of the body breakage that you were talking about and the capital expense. Maybe it's something we ought to look at from time to time, just investigate.
Hey, Don, I know, I know recently we had the discussion with regard to going to a larger can. Uh, can you speak a little bit on that and, and just kind of tell me what some of your thoughts are? Um, which can do you feel like is probably the more appropriate size? And do you feel like there's gonna be enough of an incentive for the city as far as the breakdown on the worker and all those things for us to consider making that change?
Uh, well, let me first start off and comment about, uh, the Hawkeye. Wrote an article. Um, Randy Miller wrote an article. Uh, I appreciate both their efforts in putting the article together. Uh, I thought that they did a good job. There was one thing with, uh, Randy's where he seemed to indicate that I think the leaf program and the citywide cleanup was paid for from the recycling, at least the way I read, I only read it through one time, then I threw it away. No, I. But, but, you know, all, as I said, all those things are covered by the basic trash service. I've, I've done some research on the containers, I had them brought up here for a reason. Um, I'd like to just take a couple of minutes and make just a couple of comments, and then I'll say some. I wasn't really sure how I should handle this, but first off, again, the tag program started in May of ninety-five. And the reason it was done was it was a tool to encourage recycling. Uh, they wanted to gen, they wanted to encourage recycling, and they wanted to generate enough revenue in order to cover the trash program and the recycling program. Why were they doing this? Because the government at that time was pushing to get stuff out of the landfill, not taking up space in a landfill with material that could be, have useful purpose and use elsewhere. And, uh, they set targeted goals for commissions such as ours, or individual community if you wanted to, but we joined a commission instead because of all the paperwork associated with it. And they set up targeted goals to reduce the amount of material going to the landfill based on a, I think it was nineteen eighty-nine's solid waste stream coming from all these member communities into that local landfill. And they set targets. So, in response to that, to help with that, well, number, first thing they did is they kicked out all the yard waste, which was, used to go in there, they kicked out the tires which used to go in a landfill. Of course, that helped reduce the weight tremendously. And then they, uh, they started to put together or focus more on recycling. Uh, they corrugated cardboard, they started working with industry, industry, and the commercial entities have done a significant part of the reason that we're doing as well as we are recycling in our area. Um, and then, like I said, we have the recycling program, we've got the corrugated cardboard, glass, the plastics, uh, uh, electronics with screens, that's not, that's not something that a lot of places do, but we do that, which can be a thorn in the side of people wanting to get rid of a computer monitor or getting rid of a TV. That's expensive. I think Burlington and then Mount Pleasant, I'm not really sure about Mount Pleasant program, but I think they have a tag program for garbage. I think virtually all their material that goes to the landfill has to be tagged. Other than that, all the other communities, as far as I know, just have their basic programs. I mean, they may have recycling available to them, but they don't have any incentive to participate in that. Now, our current program uses the thirty-three gallon volume. Could be a can, couldn't be a bag. That can right there, that blue can is a thirty-two gallon can. So that's a fairly standard can. Not supposed to put more than fifty pounds in it. Um, the basic fee pays for us collecting that one can, and of course, a tag's required for any additional containers. Uh, the problems that the tag program creates is that if you ever drive down the street, fifty percent of the cans don't seem to have lids. There's always bags picking up out of the can. And they may not weigh fifty pounds, but the volume is way up there. They, so they get mad if the guy takes the bag off. The guy decides, do I take it or do I not take it? It doesn't have a tag on it. So there's a volume issue, there's a weight issue, uh, since the cans don't have lids, there's rain that goes in there. And people have gutter, no, have garages with eaves trough and no gutters, and their can's sitting right there and it shuts off the roof and goes in the can. And then they want to know why the guy doesn't pick up the can. And, so, uh, um, there's a lot of issues associated with the tag program. And of course, as I mentioned, my concerns for my guys, their backs, tendonitis, we've got guys with tendonitis, we've got the guys that sprain their knees and sprain their ankles. Of course, that is more getting in and out of truck, walking along these uneven surfaces. But if they're carrying something on a slippery slope or something like that, that's a lot of difficulty too, as opposed to maybe dragging something. Um, and of course, neighbors are affecting neighbors, so. Uh, I went and I looked into these programs and I talked to different communities, and, uh, you asked me what can I would recommend for our community if we were to go to it. And the blue one is a thirty-two, the light green is a thirty-five. Um, I, I am not really in favor of the thirty-five. I'm in favor of the next one, which is a sixty-five.
Happy to hear you say that.
I like the sixty-five. I think in talking to the manufacturers, sixty-five is becoming more and more popular, whereas the number one used to be the nineties, ninety-fives. Now they're going down sixty-five, why, I don't know. Um, sixty-five, I would think would service virtually all of our people, except there's gonna be a few customers that probably can't get away with just one sixty-five.
We've got at least one.
And I'd like, and I'd like to stay with all the same size. But there are communities out there that allow the customer to choose which size they want, and they pay differently based on the size they choose.
We've also been in communities that, uh, if you have, you can have a subscription for a second can and just have it on your monthly bill for a
Right.
fee for that second one, or a third, or however many there are.
The, uh, small, uh, believe it or not, I go to Cedar Rapids every once in a while, and Cedar Rapids program is built around a thirty-five gallon can. Now, they've got a thirty-five gallon garbage can, and then it looks to me like they got a sixty-five gallon, single-stream recycling can. And then I think they've got like a ninety gallon or whatever yard waste can. So they have three different trucks that go around and pick up the material. But they have single-stream recycling, which I think sound, it's, it's nice, and, but you have to have the right type of facility to handle it. People, especially older people, probably want to limit the number of round trips they make to the curb or to the alley. And for recycling, you gotta take out that little green stop sign, and then you can take other ones out there, but you've got to make one or multiple trips and take the recyclers out there as opposed to single-stream, you just drag out the one can. I think some people use bags for garbage because they want to make one round trip. They don't want to make two round trips, and there's gonna be resistance, well, there's always resistance to change. I would say we've handled a dozen calls at the plant, since there are goals wanting to know, are we gonna do this? I don't want to do this. I'd say ten out of twelve are opposed to the program. Because I don't generate that much garbage. I generate one Hy-Vee, two Hy-Vee bags of garbage, that's all I generate. I don't need a big can. I don't want to pay for somebody who doesn't care to recycle. If they would recycle, they wouldn't have to buy a tag. And I understand that argument, I do. But if you think about that sixty-five gallon can, how many of the families who stick with thirty-five gallon can or thirty-three gallon can, once in a while, they have a family gathering, and they generate more than they gotta go out and buy a tag? When they go to the leaf program, they go out and they buy packets of five yard waste bags for two bucks, for those five bags. Our program is ten weeks, three in the spring, seven in the fall. That's equivalent to two paper bags. So they could put their leaves, the, the city in their wisdom, the city council in their wisdom, which I opposed, said, well, let's let them use garbage cans for leaves. And to let them use their garbage can, we'll pick up the garbage on this day and we'll pick up the leaves on the next day. That way they can take their empty garbage can and put their leaves into it. Handling cans to pick up leaves as opposed to picking up a bag and throwing it in and going on your way versus picking a can up, emptying it, put it back. You don't, you can't imagine people complaining about, you didn't put my lid back on my can. Or my can blew out in the street, and it got hit, it's your fault.
Well, now, but also the person collecting it is doing twice the amount of motion.
That's right.
Which is where our injury, and that's one of the primary drivers in my, in my, um, experience, is why we're talking about this, is the, the amount of cost and the amount of downtime that some of these guys are taking in the, the, the workload that's being put on their body. But I lived in a community where we, we had the thirty-five gallon can, and we did have, have the one can for recycling and the one for trash. And while it is more space than the thirty-three, it's taller and it's more narrow, so it's much more susceptible to being blown over or knocked over. And the number of times, uh, that you would find those things knocked over in the community I lived in, actually ended up going to the larger can with the bigger base just to be able to combat that.
And I was told that people will take pizza boxes and jam it in their corner, corner and everything underneath it, it's stuck, and you can't, you gotta reach in there, pull it out, you can't get it out of there. Now, the guy I knew from Cedar Rapids as well, uh, they put that in the recycling, the pizza box in the recycling container. I said, well, they don't take pizza boxes with food oil on it. And he said, yes, they do, in Cedar Rapids, they do. We don't do it here, so.
Omaha, what they do is, uh, they do two, a sixty-five gallon for trash and sixty-five gallon for the recyclables, and they put pizza boxes in there. The problem I always had with the recyclables, the container's too small. My mom, forgive me, mom, it's on TV, but she's seventy plus. She has a sixty-five gallon by a private hauler on a long driveway. It's actually easier for her to use that can because it has wheels on it than a standard thirty-two gallon trash can. So she rolls it down there, it's never, uh, a weight issue, and she rolls it back when it's done. And with the lid being attached, the problem with those thirty-two gallon ones, in fact, I just drove by my place and it was empty because I've got it listed. So there was no trash in it, but the lid comes off and then the air gets inside the can and, and knocks it over. As long as the lid is on the can, it doesn't blow over. And so I had to stop by and pick it up. So there's several advantages to the trash cans.
There, there's pluses and minuses to those.
What would you say about our alley pickups?
Where about forty-eight percent of our collection is alley and fifty-two percent is, uh, curbside.
Many alleys would be pretty tough too, but.
So, another quick question, who decides what recyclable containers are used? Is that done by the?
Solid Waste Commission.
They, okay, alright. And then, um, just to elaborate on what Shane was talking about, so I spoke to, um, to, uh, one of the private entities regarding this a while back, and, and asked them, and they brought up some issues, and they said, our, the biggest problem we're gonna have is, is efficiently collecting trash in some of the more narrow alleyways. It's not gonna allow for us to have an arm that's gonna make it more automated. And then there's, there's moving trash in the van, if we had to put the adapter on. What, do you think that this is something that can hurt efficiency? Are we gonna see longer pickup times, or what do you think?
Well, I have heartburn because semi-automated collection, you drag the cart to the truck to the tipper, you pull the lever, it dumps it, you gotta take the can and push it back and put it back. Um, does that take more time than the guy emptying the can? A lot of times the guys will reach in and pull a bag out of the can and throw it in there, which I don't like them do because I'm worried about them getting cut or spoked by something that's in the bag. But guys do what they do because they want to move along. Um, they have heartburn, they think, well, Don, are we gonna be able to get all these carts emptied? If we go to a semi-automated, and will we be able to do it all? And I said, I think there's gonna be a learning curve, it's gonna take us a while, but once we get going, yeah. I think people who learn, who have sixty, sixty-five gallon cart, and they put out a couple of grocery bags and it's raining out, hey, my cart's not, well, I'm not gonna take it out and go in the rain, or it's snowy or icy, they just leave their cart alone and they won't even take it out. So I don't think we'll be emptying every city or every household every week. But I think there's a learning curve, and then, and I think they'll, they'll be able to do it with the eight people, the seven plus one and, at the part-timer. But, you know, when somebody's sick or when someone takes vacation, and typically with these programs, you have two men, two men on a truck. They're typically two-man truck unless you're using a fully automated truck with the joystick and the arm coming out. Some communities have both types of programs. They have some areas that are fully automated, and they have some areas that are semi-automated.
And do you think that that's something that would be more appropriate for our community?
Well, I would start out initially with fully, I mean, uh, semi-automated and then look to do that, but, uh, I don't know, it's an old, old community, there's a lot of issues in the community.
Yeah. It's gonna probably require the upgrade of a couple of trucks and then two, wouldn't it?
Oh, definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But, Eric, you guys are sending out a survey in the water bill, is that what you're doing?
Yeah, Charlie put together a survey through the water bill, just asking residents what their thoughts are on going to an increased-size trash can. That would cost up to, I think it was two twenty-five a month, was that the cost? And on our end, from the nuisance side, we do see that as a nuisance issue as well of trash not getting picked up or staying in someone's yard or, uh, not putting tags on it.
Yeah. Now, the households that buy eight tag a week will benefit. I mean, if, if we did raise the rate two and a quarter, well, trash tag costs them two dollars. So their monthly rate goes up two and a quarter, well, that's basically the cost of one tag for one week. Then they get, the other three weeks are covered, they don't have to buy the trash tag. But how many of the households out there are just one trash tags only versus people who buy three and four? I don't know. Uh, I asked my guys, how many households just take a bag out, put it out there? They make that one round trip. And they said, well, they would guess they about ten to fifteen percent of the households only take out a bag and set it down. Now you're gonna make them drag a container out, so then they have to make two round trips. And the city of Burlington is not flat. You know, those cans need some semblance of flatness to stay upright. I mean, they can sit on a little bit of tilt. So there are all kinds of issues, but they use these cans virtually everywhere in the United States. So the problems can be overcome, it's just that attitudes are hard to overcome.
I have a question. Do you have any way of knowing how many of those tags that are sold maybe go to a Hi-Dibed or a television? It takes ten tags to, for someone to pick up a television, I mean.
Well, I, I, I mean, I think we probably have the detail, but I don't think we keep track how many TVs and how many mattresses that, you know, we don't have it in a spreadsheet right now, but we can probably figure that out with time.
Any other questions for Don? Are you satisfied? Jim?
Budget's built on adding one position, uh, the position that was lost four years ago. It is not built on switching or transitioning to a cart system. If that was something that you wanted to look at, you would need to have some discussion and, and drive that forward because that's gonna be, that's a huge policy issue. Communities that go through that transition, uh, some of them see some very heated debates come up.
Yeah.
And the other one that, John, you mentioned, the idea of going out for proposals. You, you're going out for an RFP and you have to really, through that process, say, what is it that we're doing an RFP on? What level of services are we looking to do? Um, you have to know that you have an impact on your existing employees, and hopefully if you are doing that, you're not doing it just for a number. You're, uh, doing it because you're seriously considering it, and then your employees know that. Um, it's not an easy process, but it's certainly one that can be done. But you have to, as a group, be willing to be doing that because you think that's good for the community.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, e, e, either, either that or private, that's not something we can do. That's something we have, we would have to put a, on a long-term goal to work on, I understand that, so.
Jim, how much do you think it would cost to put this program in place? Do we have any idea what those numbers look like?
Five hundred thousand. And we'd finance that over a five-year basis.
And then the increase in the, the fees would essentially.
So what, when, when, when we made an estimate that we'd have to have a two and a quarter raised to the base, that's making an assumption that almost all the tag revenue goes away.
Okay.
Um, and needing to cover the financing of purchasing the containers, so.
You said, you said almost, we, I mean, if we did this, we wouldn't sell tags regardless, right?
Well.
You'd still have those extra bulk items.
I would say, I would say you'd still use them for bulky items.
Yeah, you'd still have the televisions and the Hi-Dibed.
And you would still have some people like me who would have two containers, not one. So you're gonna have a few of those subscriptions that are more than, than one. So you're still gonna have some level of revenue. And you would still have some people like me who would have two containers, not one. So you're gonna have a few of those subscriptions that are more than, than one, so you're still gonna have some level of revenue. It's not gonna be a sign, significant amount compared to the two hundred and twenty thousand we raised annually now. I had it more like twenty thousand.
Okay.
Is everybody good?
Yeah.
Alright. That was a
Thanks, Don.
Almost solidified moving, uh, I was trying to think of something cool to say, I'm, I'm out of it. Alright, uh, James or, uh, Mr. Tisland?
So, Eric's set to go over, uh, his budgets. He's on both tonight and on Thursday night. Thursday night is Nick. So it's kind of, I don't know how much you wanna go through, Eric, and how much you're wanting to take, but if you think that, uh, Don, an hour and a half, I wouldn't be surprised, an hour and a half, Don.
It went over.
That's because trash is trash, it's just a simple subject.
Uh, Nick is, Nick is probably gonna be about the same level of time on Thursday night and Eric, uh, probably about that same level of time. He can either be all in one night or split across the two and if you want him to be split, he's gonna have to go to, I guess to, you have a breaking point?
Development first and Parks.
Let's split, let's split it up.
So I, I do have it broken into, uh, development first and then Parks and so once we get to development off questions and if, you can let me know if you want me to continue on or stop at that point. Parks does have a few more divisions in it, so it might take a little longer just knowing that. Alright, so we're gonna go through, again, uh, start with community development. And then just in general, our organizational chart, uh, how we break down. Parks and development are tied together primarily through, uh, myself as the director and our project coordinator that serve and function through both divisions or both departments. Um, overall, we have seven full-time, uh, development staffing, uh, that does include myself and, uh, the project coordinator. Uh, we're not counted towards, uh, full-time staffing out of Parks, our, uh, salary benefits are paid out of the development department budgets. Uh, one, uh, seasonal, uh, employee in the development department that was added last year, the, um, nuisance inspector. And then on the park side, we have eight full-time and one part-time employee, uh, and then nineteen full-time equivalent, so we're a large, uh, seasonal staffing, uh, division on the park side. Um, as you see there, the code inspections includes two building inspectors and, uh, two rental, uh, slash nuisance inspectors. Uh, the rental function is, falls under the building code, uh, chief inspector there, uh, the nuisance, uh, portion falls under our planning director, uh, Charlie. Um, on the park side, um, we have two, uh, full-time under parks, two full-time under forestry and one, uh, permanent part-time under forestry, uh, recreation. Uh, we have one full-time at the golf course, one full-time that's split, uh, salary benefits between recreation and the golf course, Brad Selye, the recreation supervisor, uh, who also oversees the pool. And then two full-time at the recplex. So going into the community development, um, our mission under the community development department is to improve the safety and appeal of our community through high-quality customer service and consistent code enforcement. So we are, uh, primarily a service department. Major function is inspections, uh, code enforcement, code review. Uh, there's two divisions within the community development department, um, the code title thirteen oh one is building code administration, that includes all our building inspection, rental and nuisance inspections. And fourteen oh one is planning and zoning, uh, which includes, uh, myself and then, uh, the city planner, our planning director, uh, and the services there. Uh, so the services we provide, building permits and inspection, construction, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, sewer demo, plan review, et cetera. Uh, rental inspections, nuisance inspections and compliance, uh, and then on the planning and zoning side is primarily site plan review, uh, have boards and commissions, planning commission, zoning board, historic preservation commission. Uh, projects and grants has become a big part of that, uh, through the, uh, planning director managing, um, and working on different, uh, projects across departmentally as well, uh, working on flood project. Some of the other items, uh, with public works are different departments. Some of the bigger line items under, uh, building code administration is the, um, thirteen oh one, five twenty-nine, the miscellaneous technical services. Uh, that has been inflated the last few years as we're dealing with private ash tree removals. Uh, typically that had been in the thirty-five thousand dollar, uh, range. We do have it, uh, scaling down over the next two years, uh, currently budgeted at seventy-five thousand, going down to seventy, sixty-five and then thirty-five thousand in the out years. That handles when the city, uh, basically goes through a nuisance project, process, tells someone they have to abate a nuisance, whether it's trash or grass or a tree, that you have to have this removed and they, they don't do it on their own, we hire a contractor and pay him through this, uh, uh, this line item, uh, to do that and then hopefully as we'll go over revenues at the end, that we get some of that back through our nuisance collections, but, uh, we have to have that money in the budget to pay a contractor to do those items and ash trees has been a big one, it's kind of an unknown amount, um, as I'll talk in parks, we're kind of through that on the park side, but uh, there are still quite a few ash trees in people's backyards and front yards that are continuing to die and have to be dealt with and, as a nuisance hazard. Some items that we're working on are, uh, critical nuisance enforcement process, uh, we are gonna be having some code updates come through council in the next month or so. Trying to streamline our nuisance process and, um, hopefully work, uh, better through, uh, some of the issues and processes that we have. Uh, doing some proactive nuisance inspection, uh, that was kind of the intent of the seasonal staffing. Um, we had them for part of a year last year, so this will be the first, first full year that we'll have them, uh, hired on in the spring through the fall position. Code compliance, uh, we're starting to work on more, or going through the process of, uh, I guess the municipal infraction process, that's something we're, uh, looking at using or trying to identify the success of that in, in conjunction with our nuisance process. And then the I-Works, uh, is a program that we're looking at, um, that's the increase in, uh, line item five fourteen under, uh, thirteen oh one uh, for, uh, inspection permit management, tracking and reporting software, our, uh, web-based system, uh, to do our permitting and code enforcement. Currently we do permitting through, uh, Schneider, which is handled through the GIS commission, um, which is a city-county West Burlington, uh, commission. Um, so we'd be limiting that cost and then as they update the financial, uh, pro, I guess, account, or financial system. We're paying annually just to maintain some of our back records and getting rid of that cost, so hopefully, uh, that cost will be covered by some of our current costs. Uh, the initial system is a additional five thousand dollar setup, but then it goes down, uh, to nine thousand annually after this year, uh, for an annual cost of doing that. But that would be web-based, all our permitting would run through that and then code enforcement.
That's supposed to be, that's supposed to, uh, be so much more economical too, uh, just having that program, isn't that correct?
Yeah, partly, and then partly just from a resource standpoint, we do our permits through paper copies now, so we're, if we go out on a electrical inspection at a house, we file a carbon copy, give the homeowner or developer a copy. We keep a copy on file, so we're having to keep track of however many times we go out on inspection, ten or twelve over a six-month period on a big project. Uh, this would have all line itemed out in a, uh, one system that if I had a question or someone had a question, what, would have been the issues on this property, we could easily pull that up through our web-based system instead of having to go to paper. Uh, but we'd use that for our rental inspections as well, nuisance inspections, as we're driving through the community, we could pull up the app, click on the property and it'd pull up the information, we could tag it as a nuisance and then when we get back, uh, go through that process, so. Um, that's something that we've been looking at for quite a number of years and, uh, I think this cost is, uh, in line with what we're, we're hoping for. Some of the original ones were twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars, uh, but this is a web-based one, so something we feel could be very important to our department.
And just to point out that this is something that Nick will cover with his department too, they're looking at the same system, uh, for different, different usage, but within the same system so that they, they will be coordinated some.
I think part of that, having public works and development, they reduce some of their costs for some of that setup and, um, hopefully we got a, something that'll work well with our staff and, uh, the public going forward. And then as I mentioned, private tree removals, uh, we have seventy-five thousand, uh, this current fiscal year and then reducing over the next two fiscal years back to a, a more normal amount. Uh, under the, just mentioned quickly, under the planning and zoning, one of the large line items is, uh, fourteen oh one, five eleven, uh, over forty-six thousand. Uh, part of that covers, uh, GIS, uh, commission cost, uh, for the city, uh, that's split between, uh, public works and development department. And then part of that is, uh, payment for downtown partners or annual payment comes out of that. So that's, uh, kind of two services that are provided that are, an annual payment comes out of that.
So downtown partners, we give fifteen thousand to a year and that, we've done that for, uh, several years. Uh, if you were to look in comparison with what other communities that have an agency such as that, uh, we're probably, we would be on the light end for what our financing is towards that organization. But they've, they do an awful lot of work that's on the city's behalf.
Some of the projects looking at on the development department side, uh, abandoned property acquisition that we, uh, go through, have those come up for sale through the council, uh, process and I'll talk about that a little bit more, um, here shortly. Uh, nuisance gar, garages, uh, that was something we looked at last fall, um, trying to identify some of these nuisance garages throughout the community that might be, I wouldn't say easy wins, but something with, that we could identify and have, uh, abated or cleaned up or removed or painted. Kind of slowed through that process last year, but, uh, it's something we've been working on over the winter, um, to try and address some of these derelict buildings throughout the community. I guess an easier process to deal with than a, an occupied home or an owner-occupied home and also get us through this process and see how it works and then, um, I know Charlie and on the nuisance side is starting to identify, uh, a few, uh, owner-occupied homes and kind of working through what would that process be and, uh, going through that. Uh, the nuisance trees and ash, the ash, the hazard trees, uh, continuing to identify those, uh, grant project administration, um, working on the Flint River Trail. That's kind of one that, uh, we're hopefully going, getting towards the end of, uh, completion of that.
Yeah.
That would be, uh, a great one to finally be done with, but, um, I guess we're at a point on Bluff Road where we're, uh, as I'll talk through the CIP and the park side of it, we had two separate years of, uh, Flint River Trail identified, but through some of this additional work, we've been able to cut that down to just one future project instead of two. Uh, the brownfield EPA-funded projects, uh, those are fully funded through the EPA, uh, we're in year two or early in year two on, uh, these two, uh, programs, the assessment project. That does, uh, environmental studies on existing buildings, um, and then the area-wide planning project, uh, they'll be coming back in the next couple of months. Talking about some of the catalyst sites and where they're at with that downtown, uh, area-wide plan for the, uh, brownfields. And then housing rehab programs, um, talk about later as well, Charlie had brought forward a healthy neighborhoods program, uh, looking at, uh, some funding for that. Uh, we're also part of the Great River Housing Trust, uh, Dan Eberhart was here a few months ago, uh, talking about some of the financial support for that and what that, uh, means for our community. Uh, it's down payment assistance, owner-occupied, uh, rehab projects, um, for income-qualified individuals, uh, through the regional planning commission. Um, so, uh, some of our funding through our, uh, housing programs, when we sell those homes or through the community development program goes towards that as well. That improves their neighborhoods and, uh, our quality of housing stock as well. And then as I mentioned, uh, some of the stuff, uh, Charlie does is, uh, working with the river flood project, uh, SRF projects and CDVG sewer projects. Kind of that cross-departmental, uh, work that, um, does through projected and grant administration. So just a quick update on our redevelopment program, um, we continue to acquire properties through that six fifty-seven A process. Um, that's, everyone's not familiar with it, there's a, a state code that allows the city to petition for title of abandoned properties if they meet certain criteria. Uh, that's through the, uh, court system that is awarded, cities awarded clean title on properties, uh, we go through a notification and, um, identifying, I guess, certain criteria on the home having been abandoned for six months or more, uh, and then we're able to either demolish those properties and sell the lots or, uh, sell lots for rehab. Whereas in the past, before we started this process, uh, we'd demolish a lot and then it would sit there and then we'd go through the next year of applying nuisances to the property and just build up assessments and assessments to where it got to be. There's no one gonna pick it up on tax sale, we're gonna continue to abate it through nuisance indefinitely because there's, why would someone buy a vacant lot for twelve thousand dollars in back taxes or assessments? Um, whereas this does, uh, have some upfront cost of acquiring the property, but then we're able to get it into someone's hand, someone's hands that we're not having that long-term nuisance on it. We are getting to the point where we're probably demoing more properties, then we're able to rehab or sell. But that's also cleaning up neighborhoods and getting rid of some of these derelict buildings, so, uh, you'll probably continue to see more, uh, vacant lots be, coming through and still have some homes that, uh, we acquire that are able to be sold, but we're kind of through some of those as well, so. We see this as a part of that neighborhood stabilization, get rid, getting rid of vacant properties, derelict properties and FY seventeen, we had twelve properties sold, twenty-two thousand in total sales amount. In addition, uh, we had a, the NSP house at Fifth and Maple, uh, that we sold for twenty-eight thousand five hundred, uh, looking to close on that property this, uh, next week or so. But that was one where we acquired that lot and then, uh, we're able to work with another grant program and build a new house on it. And FY eighteen, year-to-date, we have eleven properties sold and twenty-nine thousand five hundred in total sales amount. Again, that comes into the housing demo program or fund. As you see there, we list all our, uh, homes that are able to be rehabbed on our Facebook page. And this also includes the Burlington Community School District House that was sold to, or transferred to them for their, uh, building trades program and then, uh, lots sold to Southeast Iowa Region Planning that uh, hopefully they can build a new home on and sell to an income-qualified individual.
You're doing it, kid.
So that, um, we like to hit those Gulf Lane properties that sell for ninety thousand, but those are few and far between. One good thing is that this process was challenged through the Supreme Court and was upheld by the Iowa Supreme Court that, uh, so we kind of put it on hold for a couple of months of using six fifty-seven A, but, uh, it was challenged and did go through that process and we're continuing to use that.
Good.
So as I mentioned, these funds, uh, the city has twenty thousand annually budgeted through our demo or housing program, uh, these funds go into that as well and, uh, as a whole can be used for the housing trust, uh, match programs, home funds, uh, utilizing that for Parkview Care Center, uh, going through that large project.
The housing demo fund is a capital project fund, I'm not sure how much we'll have for cash carryover after the Parkview Care Center demo is completed and we sell those lots, but we've put, the funding that we put in here is twenty thousand annually out of local option sales tax. This next year, we're budgeting twenty thousand to go to the two programs run through Southeast Iowa, the down payment assistance and the rehab housing, our local match on those. And that's a fun, phenomenal use of funds to be able to leverage. Uh, but it puts us in extreme limitation on the funds available for, as Eric talks about, uh, other properties that we could potentially get through the six fifty-seven A process. Uh, he's seeing, they're seeing fewer that they can purchase and then resell, they're more into the neighborhood of needing to, uh, take over and demo. Uh, and that is a much more costly, uh, alternative and will put us in a spot where we have some significant limitations as to how many can be done the way our budget is set up. Again, we may have some care, we should have some carryover funds at the end of, uh, the nursing home demo, but not enough to do a lot. Well, maybe one lot.
To do a lot. Yeah, I just. Ben, you're always the bearer of bad news after every little good thing.
What I wanted to say is this is a program that we would like to be able to, to be more aggressive on, it's a matter of how much funding can we put towards it? We don't have a lot to allocate towards it and coming up with a source to do that means putting a limitation on something else.
Like I said, anyways, you're always a bearer of bad news, please continue, Mr. Tisland.
And that's where for a while it was somewhat of a self-funding program and built up enough that we could do a Parkview Care Center type project and I had, it is somewhat random in some of the homes that we're able to acquire, whether they're able to be sold for five thousand or two thousand or ten thousand, so uh, if we're able to find some of those, that we can generate more revenue that. So if we're able to find some of those, that we can generate more revenue, that allows us to do more as well. It is about a fifteen hundred dollar cost just to do, go through the six fifty-seven A process, twelve hundred, through the attorney and court proceedings. And then the demo cost on a home can be anywhere from three thousand to ten thousand. So that kind of gives you an indication when we sell lots for five hundred or fifteen hundred. It is a loss, but over the long term, hopefully improving the neighborhoods and not having that nuisance cost annually as well.
All right.
So permit fees, that is a large, or covers a large portion, especially on the building inspection side of their annual costs. This past year, F Y seventeen was a very high year from permit fee revenue. As you see there, and we had five hundred and ninety-eight permits. That includes new construction, rehab, remodel type projects for residential, commercial, industrial, collected over three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars in permits from the building permit, which also includes electrical permits, plumbing, mechanical, sewer, et cetera. Just for comparison, in F Y sixteen, we had two hundred and fifty-four thousand in permit fees collected through that. So we get the large projects out in the former manor site, those are big drivers. You get some of these downtown rehab projects over the years, those are big drivers, are large projects. But it's not something that can, just because we see three hundred and forty thousand this year, we don't anticipate three hundred and forty thousand next year. So we still have to be conservative and see that there may be some spikes in that and trends in that. The rental inspections, that's a little more uniform, although even with that, we have a three-year and a five-year inspection cycle, five years for a single family and duplex, three-year for multifamily. So it depends on where those hit in the process, but generally pretty consistent in that mid-sixties to high sixty thousand dollar range annually. And then nuisance inspections, again, that is somewhat a little more random on the amount that we collect, but did have a high year last year through fees collected directly from the, by the city after sending out a bill or through paying on their taxes at the county level, collected over forty-seven thousand on that and forty-one thousand compared to, compared to last year. So F Y seventeen was a high year, a good year on fees collected through the inspection programs, but it's something, we also can't just bump up all our anticipated budgets for the following year based on that. We still have to be conservative and recognize there may be downturns in the economy which affects our permits collected or just a slowing or maybe not those large projects that we saw the last couple of years. Do anticipate or hope, I guess, that there would be, there's been some lot sales again in the manor site, that there'd be some new construction out there as well, so. These are the, I guess, budget lines through the two, the thirteen oh one building code administration and fourteen oh one planning and zoning. The total expenses on building code, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, planning and zoning, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. And you can see, F Y seventeen, our budget amount and actual amount was considerably lower. Part of that was due to having a large amount, I think a hundred and twenty thousand budgeted for nuisance tree removals, and that's kind of a hard, hard one to determine. How many are going to be removed by homeowners? How many are we going to have to contract? And going forward, as I mentioned, that's a big driver of that budget is that's a high line item and hopefully.
Was that pretty much all tree removal on that difference?
I think it was around ninety-five thousand was what we actually spent and a hundred and twenty was budgeted, so there's around thirty thousand there. But hopefully those, that number will continue to come down and as we project out on that end. And then revenue, as you see, as I talked about, we budgeted three hundred and fifty-seven thousand total revenue through collections in F Y seventeen and collected four hundred and fifty-three, but we still try and maintain that reasonable amount there.
That one's kind of tough. We haven't done a fee schedule change. The first, so, so seeing revenues go up based off of that doesn't tend to happen. It's all based on valuation. Current year-to-date, the first six months, we are on pace to hit budget, the three hundred and eighty-four thousand range. So we're quite a bit down on building permits this year versus the previous year. And some of that could be timing. We could end up still with a year that we're significantly above, but it's, as Eric's saying, it's hard to predict and really depends on what happens with the local economy moving forward. The funds for revenue goes into the general fund. These are, when you look at the revenues that are collected in the general fund, these are part of the fees that are in there and they help to offset the costs for his general fund expenditures.
So C I P items, as mentioned, the twenty thousand is an annual C I P item through the redevelopment or housing program from F Y nineteen to F Y twenty-three. Previously, that had been higher, I think, three or four years ago, it was around forty thousand, and that was reduced down around that time period, down to twenty thousand. Couple of other items in the F Y nineteen, C I P, parking lot, wayfinding signage, that was completion of the downtown parking wayfinding, getting the directional signs up. We did have a larger amount in there, hoping to do some kind of community wayfinding as well, and that was taken out, but that's something down the road if funds are identified, whether privately or otherwise, that we'd like to see is kind of following through on that wayfinding plan. The healthy neighborhoods is twenty-seven thousand, ten thousand local, seventeen thousand has been committed privately through that program. Ten thousand of that is contingent on the city giving funds. They would give those funds if the city were to give some amount of funds to that program. I think seven thousand has already been allocated or donated regardless for that. And then the brownfield assessment and planning, those are a hundred and twenty-five thousand and fifty thousand budgeted through this year, fully through the EPA, no city funds in those. And then future projects includes brownfield assessment, just continuing that on into F Y twenty at seventy-five thousand. Possible future projects that aren't programmed, programmed or funded, we did remove the downtown facade project, that was a very successful project a couple of years ago, had in the last year's C I P having that, I think in F Y twenty, but did remove that. Sidewalk program, having a targeted, targeted program, something we've looked at, just aren't funds available. Again, the wayfinding signage, directional to key attractions, historic tax credit and historic district designation were removed from the program. Whether healthy neighborhoods, kind of seeing if that's successful, if that could be funded in future years as well or not. Part of it would be, see how successful it is if it is funded this year. And then housing and neighborhood rehab grant projects, as Jim mentioned, those funds came out of the demo program, whether separate funding could be identified for those. And then Green Alley improvements was another item that was budgeted in last year's C I P that was So it kind of covers most development. The shorter end of the two divisions, just because there's a lot more, are more divisions within parks. But any questions on that or any, any other information you'd like to see?
Council, requests?
Full-time, I'd really like to see that community redevelopment increase. And I know it's not there now, but the, our ability to improve our housing stock really relies on those types of programs, so that's a really important thing to see.
They're big time. It's big time. You guys good? I think we're, I think we're good for tonight.
Good, do parks sound?
You guys?
Good.
It's up to you guys.
Good as in, as in complete for the night.
Good job.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Everybody except for Tanner Cole. Good night.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. We're still on.
Hey, sorry.
What is this guy, what?
I just wanted to update you on the emergency sewer repair that we're going to have to do. We, Jesse was able to get back and put together kind of a bid packet. We sent it out to, I think, four or five local contractors. Those are scheduled to be back on Wednesday, where we will review them and then inform the contractor who gets the job, and then they have a late start date of Monday. Hopefully, they can start sooner than that. We've been in contact with the D N R, and they, they're fine with what we have for barricading the area and our current schedule to fix the project. The estimate that Jesse worked up is in the hundred thousand dollar range.
Yeah, it was going to be more than a hundred grand.
He used some inflated numbers with the D O T specs on this, so we're hoping that's a little less than that, but there's a lot of unknowns as you're excavating down thirty foot, so hopefully, hopefully we can keep it at just that mark.
Is this going to, is this going to affect any retention wall that's there?
Oh, we'll be into the parking lot. In order to excavate, they're likely having to go in there and take down the, the bear, there's a fence there, go in there and cut through some of the parking, kind of bench themselves down and we continue to go.
Isn't there some type of retention wall holding portion of that?
It's, it's just currently dirt with quite a bit of trees in there. We're going to have to clear quite a bit of trees in that area. And actually, the wall, the dirt sits, there's more concrete over top of the dirt where it should be further out, so. I don't explain that easy, but hopefully we see that starting this week, but more likely Monday.
Thank you, sir. Jim?
That's it.
Any, any progress on the P D building? Have we heard anything?
No, in fact, I wasn't too concerned about getting back to them until we got closer to next week's full session.
All right. Thanks.
We're, we're done for the evening. I just want everybody to know that's listening, I destroyed the city manager and laser tag this weekend, so you can rest easy. There's nothing else?
And we are on the same team.
That's the best part. Good night, everybody.